Thank you very much everybody for attending this afternoon to the Finance Subcommittee. The meeting today is open to the public. We've received no public questions for today's meeting. However, the Communities Park and Leisure Policy Committee have referred a question on to me in respect of the accommodation strategy and details of the buildings that are requiring critical and essential maintenance. And we'll provide a written response to that and submit it through here. Councilor Hamid.
I was going to pick that up in the minutes, a matter arising, in that I'd asked for that information and two months on, I have not had that information.
Okay, well, this is a specific question that's come from a member of the public that went to the Parks and Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee. It is something we're planning to bring to this committee because we're getting the information together, but we can cover that as we go into the minutes and through. Can I, I'll provide a written response to the question that's come through, so we'll make sure it comes into the minutes for the meeting here. Can I request that all mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff, and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, we'll ask each Finance Subcommittee member in turn to introduce themselves. I'll start. Mine is Councilor Brian Lodge and the co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee, Mary.
Councilor Mary Lee Donald Wood.
Councilor Sahira Nas, co-chair of Finance Subcommittee.
Councilor Ruth Ralph, Edredin Sharrow.
Marielle Elliot, Green councillor for Gledys Valley.
Mike Chaplin, Labour councillor for Southey Ward.
Mike Leverick, councillor for West Ecclesfield.
Shavat Mohammed, Ecclesall Ward.
And Jonathan Doherty.
I'll get the officers to introduce themselves here, and the other officers to introduce as we come to the items there, so.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
David Hollis, interim director of Legal and Governance.
Okay, and as I say, we'll ask the other officers to introduce themselves as we come along there. There is an item on the agenda, Dave, you just want to explain about the final item on the agenda?
Yeah.
We've not been able to publish a report in term in respect of this matter. It was on the agenda and a report was sent, but it had not had legal sign-off. We did have a look at it and somebody's looked at it over the Christmas break, but it needed more work on and it's still being worked on at the moment. I don't think there's an ultimate issue with it, it's just that it did need more detail in the report, so that will be a matter that will now go to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee on the 24th of January. It doesn't cause any issues timing-wise for that actual decision, but it does mean that it won't be able to be considered here today. That's the step-up to social work postgraduate diploma cohort eight. Thank you. So, item two on the agenda, apologies for absence.
Non-chair.
Item three, exclusion of the press and public, we don't have anything on the agenda today. And item four, any members wish to declare an interest in any items of business on the agenda? No? Okay, item five, minutes of the previous meeting.
Shall I go again? So, at the last meeting in November, we had that accommodation strategy and within it, there was a section, give me a second to get it up, which said the council estimates indicate that the current estate requires around £200 million of future maintenance investment over the next five years. And £48 million of this has been highlighted as being critical and essential maintenance. The question I asked was that clearly you've come to a number, £48 million, so surely there must be something behind that, and would it be possible to provide what I thought would be a simple list of these are the critical and essential maintenance that are required at these X number of buildings? And two months on chair, we've not had anything. It looks like they've gone, some members of the public, I suspect, I know who that could be, has gone to the Communities Committee to ask the same question. So, could we somehow include that in the minutes or notes and more importantly, chase up the officers who are clearly not here today? I'll not name them publicly.
Jane, do you want to?
I think I remember the question at the time, and I think I remember the officer that said they'd get a response. I think it's one of those, it's just been made for the lead-up to Christmas, so I can follow that up and get the response for you.
The meeting was 7th of November.
There was some work that's been done on it, but we wanted to bring it to a briefing, to bring it through before it went out in a response, so that's the idea, to bring it to the briefing and to the Finance Subcommittee, and we'll get that out there as well, so we are following it up on that. Thank you. Anybody else, any other comments or matters arising? Mike?
Chair, just a bit of clarity really, top of page nine, point 1433. Just trying to make sense of that first sentence there. I take it the last word on the first line should be 'the' and not 'he', and possibly on the second line where it says accountable body role for activity that takes at regional level. Should that be 'takes place', maybe?
I think it's a typo.
Yeah, I think you've spotted some typos there, Mike, we can pick that up and rectify that.
You'll get the Jean Cromer Award there for reading of minutes.
That's what we're all supposed to do, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, we've no public questions and petitions, so item seven on the agenda is the budget monitoring of financial position for month eight. And I'll ask the officers to introduce themselves, Tony and Jane, you introduce yourselves at the start, present the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. Tony Kirkham, interim director of Finance and Commercial Services. The report in front of you today is one of a series of reports which you've received over the financial year. It updates you of the current position or current projected position in relation to the financial outturn, in relation to the general fund, the HRA and the capital programme, Chair. There has been some movement in relation to those various elements since your last meeting, some of that is improvement, some of that is continuing showing concerns in relation to where the council will outturn. But I'll leave it there as an introduction, Chair, and obviously we will look to answer their questions as appropriate.
Thank you. Councilor Leverick.
Thanks, Chair. One point three, 1.31 on page 26. We're aware obviously of the energy one-off monies of £7 million and also, but more importantly, that £12 million on the top of page 27, £12 million of this year's undelivered savings will still be unachievable in 23, 24. So, how secure is our remaining reserves of £18.2 million for next year in terms of ensuring that we're not having to use them for balancing the budget? Thank you.
Chair, the delivery of the savings in year, the BIPs as we refer to them, is an ongoing issue. It's fair to say that there are some delays in relation to the overall delivery, particularly in relation to adult services areas, and we continue to monitor the progress against those. But as the councillor points out, should we not deliver on those, then the balances available in relation to the £70 million worth of reserves which we'd set aside as part of this programme would be further reduced, but we'll not know that until the outturn. But officers are making every effort in order to deliver the savings as set out, but that we do carry that risk into the next financial year.
Mike? Yeah. Onto... The page 34, the educated schools grant, which is about 12%, overspending at the moment. I noted in the flash report that we've recruited 10 additional staff, educational psychologists, so we'll get just a quarter-year effect this year of that, but full year effect next year, which is increasing the overspend. I'm curious to know, in terms of the strategic educational planning group, their accountability when it comes to funding decisions and how that impacts on this budget, which is obviously being overspent, and how will that come be brought back into control for next year? Thank you.
The Strategic Educational Funding Group is a subset of the Strategic Leadership Team in Education and Skills. Decisions are made by that group around funding, around DSG and how that's allocated. The one around educational psychologists was to do to maintain a certain provision around the educational, the plans that needed to be paid for and that needed to be processed within a certain timeframe. There is governance around that group, decisions are common, they're made collectively around funding decisions with DSG.
Okay. Shavak?
Mine's on page 36, it's around housing. And in particular, it's around the vacant properties, the lack of income there is forecasted to be £3.2 million with the additional £1.2 million lost in council tax. And it's around, Chair, it's around the voids issue, the target is 1.5, but we're coming in at 3.5. Whilst it says there's plans in place, it doesn't seem to, here, doesn't suggest any movement, it's whether we can flag at this committee now our concerns and whether it's possible, I don't know, I'm looking at David, to maybe have a shot across the bow of the Housing Committee, to say the Finance Committee is getting a bit concerned that, you know, £4.4 million worth of losses. And it's not just financial losses to us, it's lack of housing to the people of Sheffield.
Thanks, Jude, do you want to comment?
There's been an increase in spending in housing repairs and maintenance as well, so we've looked into some of that as well prior to the meeting. The voids issue, it is coming down and they have been investing quite a lot in backlog repairs and maintenance, and that's, you know, one of the reasons that the costs have increased there. So, I think that has reduced from £500 down to £300 and the waiting time has also reduced. There is a lag in terms of when we see that come through in the accounts, because obviously those repairs that are then done, they need to be turned around and actually filled and getting back to a more manageable level in line with what we should be managing that at, the voids. So, there has been quite an investment there, so I think we're not seeing the full effect of that this year. So, next year, I think that that investment will pay back and we will see a lower cost in housing repairs and maintenance expenditure budgets and hopefully more income in as the voids kind of are filled.
Okay, I'll look forward to looking at this again, say in three, four months' time, hopefully the voids not being at 3.5.
Can I just ask on that, that's part, it's on the, I can't remember what it's called, like recovery, is it the delivery plan, isn't it, about the voids? That's one of the, one of the measures that's on there, I think, isn't it, that comes through? So, we should see, we should have visibility of that as it comes through anyway, shouldn't we? And I think, it's just to check on this, this is at month eight, isn't it, of, so we may be in a better position already, but it's not reporting through there. Okay, thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I hope you're right that we're in a better position, I wouldn't bank on it until I see it. Because I have a question on the appendix capital monitoring. So, the Future High Street Fund item, which is 4.4 on page 48, it's also mentioned on page 46 and on page 50. So, I mean, the question is, I mean, the text on page 50 suggests that if we did the whole of the scheme as originally planned, that would cost £26 million, and the budget was originally £8 million, £8 million and something. How, I mean, I mean, I understand we've got an inflationary situation in construction, but that does seem an extraordinary divergence. Is there a better and more particular explanation for that in this case?
I'll try and answer that best I can, but I'm not the expert on this area. There was a paper that came to the Finance Subcommittee, it was in the briefing session a few weeks before Christmas, actually, and it outlined the project and why the costs had come back more than planned. A lot of that was to do with inflationary uplift and immaterials and re costing the scheme out, or we were at a stage where we had committed to a certain amount of costs. I think we were talking about the difference between £20 million and £26 million and a lot of the work that was originally planned then being de-scoped to sort of manage that backing line with budget and with, you know, the, and sort of thinking about other ways and means of how we actually get the rest of that project funded. In terms of the detail, I'm trying to think what the original question was.
So, yeah, so I mean, this is, there's some slight confusion of the figures, because on page 60, or 50, sorry, there is, it says that it will cost £5.5 million more than £20.5 million available, suggests that, yeah, that's kind of the figures that you've just referred to. But under Future High Streets Fund, on, well, right, okay, so maybe the answer is that this is Future High Streets Fund Public Realm and Infrastructure, section 4.4, which is a smaller part of the whole scheme. But that part of it, according to page 46, the total outturn has gone up from £8.6 million to £14.3 million despite a reduction in scope, is that, as I understand it. So, that's already, well, that is £5.5 million, isn't it? No, it's £6.5 million, yeah. So, it's just the rest of it's on course, maybe, I don't know. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, however you cut it, that is a larger increase, it seems, than you said largely, largely inflationary, what else is there in there contributing to that?
The answer that came back from the officers that were preparing and sort of involving those costing estimates was around material costs, subcontractor costs, a larger risk allocation in there, so, you know, there was, they have kind of managed the costs back down and de-scoped a lot of the work because it came back even more than that originally, but I think it was just, it's due to the current construction market at the moment. We can provide further detail on the reason for that extra cost uplift.
So, I mean, to be clear what we're talking about, it's the Fargates, or the things like Event Central, I'm not sure about the works in Orchard Square, whether they're within this or not, the sort of public realm works in Orchard Square. The general, I mean, there's a project for the kind of, the whole of Fargates, the whole street to remodel that, isn't it? I don't know if that's part of this, is that, are these the things that we're talking about? And when it says the initial steer is to kind of focus on Fargate and to de-scope the other things, are you asking us for a final steer? I mean, if that's the initial steer, and what is it that's being lost?
Again, I'm not at faith with exactly the detail of that individual scheme, but we have got a paper on that which will be able to provide some further detail for you.
Well, I mean, I think, I think, Chair, I mean, we've got a paper that's come to us that has the words 'initial steer' in it, which suggests that, you know, we actually now have a decision-making committee that might have a view on whether that initial steer is right to be the final steer. I think we should have some information really on that therefore to say, look, what's being scoped in and what's being scoped out as a result of this inflationary pressure? Because if it was, I mean, I don't know what the things that are being scoped out are. If it's the Castle Gate project, I think, I might like to say, maybe we should do the Castle Gate and do less than Fargate, because, you know, Fargate improvement would be nice, but Castle Gate has been, is crying out, it's a derelict site, it's crying out to move forward and become the nice, you know, the nice park and historic site that we want it to be.
Can I just, do you see clarification? Because it's under the Transport, Regent and Climate Committee, Dave, so it would be for them to, they would be responsible for the scoping of what's in and out, is that correct? Rather, we see the capital, this is a capital monitoring. I'm just trying to understand where it fits in because of the committees, with the new committees, it's, this is where it gets complicated. And I will try and keep it as simple as possible. So, the commissioning will sit with the relevant policy committee, so they will make the initial decision that this is something that they want to spend it on and how that might work. The formal decision then to include it in the capital programme then sits with this committee and/or Strategy and Resources, as does the capital monitoring thereafter. So, they say this is what we want to spend it on, and we say, yes, we think that's okay to spend it on there. But I think the Castle Gate project is not part of the Future High Street Fund, that's levelling up funds. That's a levelling up fund, I think.
Okay, thank you for that, I'm relieved, I'm relieved, I'm relieved that's not what's been de-scoped, but I mean, if it is our business at all as Finance Sub, I would like to know what is being de-scoped and what, you know, and what is going ahead. And, you know, I will repeat, I don't think spending a third of a million pounds on hand out to developer for eight flats in Orchard Square is great value, so if something can be de-scoped, I think possibly that is another different fund again, but, you know, that's where I would go to de-scope. But, yeah, yeah.
That was agreed last month by the last Finance Committee meeting, we were all like certain unanimous.
It was agreed to go on the capital programme, wasn't it? But this is all stuff that's agreed, that is on the capital programme, because it's been agreed to go on here and now it's getting, some of it's getting de-scoped. Okay, I mean, I think, I've asked my question, I'm slightly frustrated, we don't have anybody who can give a more detailed answer on this. I do think that this whole area does need a little bit more attention from somebody, whether it's ourselves or TRC if they're not overloaded, because, you know, clearly the costs are out of control, the projects, the initial estimates of the cost of the project were clearly wrong, and I would like to know why that is, whether it's, you know, whether it's simply being ambitious, look, we can do a great deal with a small amount of money, therefore give us the money, or whatever the reason is. And I think we need to be clear what stays and what goes and what gets delayed in terms of the improvements to Fargate, you know, I've seen a version of the plans and they're quite nice, but whether they're as important as some of the things, I really couldn't say. So, I hope this is getting, just, I will, yeah, I suppose it's a comment now, I hope this is getting the attention it deserves. And if, you know, if TRC, I think TRC needs to look at it as a committee and not just take steers when it's this kind of, this kind of money and this kind of impact on the shape of the city centre.
Do you want to comment? Yeah, I think the role of this report and what's before the committee is monitoring what's already been approved rather than looking at what's been approved. However, if in the monitoring there is then an overspend which requires an approval, that would come here, but as part of the capital programme report as opposed to the monitoring report, and at that stage, if it was overspending, you could refer it back to the, rather than approve an additional fund, you could refer it back to the original policy committee to say, actually, this is overspending, we don't think it's any longer value for money, you need to re-look at your commissioning decision.
I mean, but the example we have here is de-scoping, which is not quite the same, but it's still not delivering what was originally approved, so this monitoring is surely the place to talk about that?
Yeah, yes, if you're de-scoping it, it depends what was approved and whether it's within the original commissioning decision, because if you're changing the commissioning decision, that should go back to the original policy committee to say, is this still in line with what you want? I mean, there will be things that can be done that don't change the original commissioning decision, but you need to look at the detail of each.
Well, I'll leave that in the hands of our very capable Legal and Governance Service to make sure that's, make sure that it's done properly, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, just for clarity on that one, it does say that the project's proceeding on the assumption that additional budget can be secured and will be approved by external funder, so one presumes we're not going to move on this until we get that external funding approved, is that correct?
If that's what it says.
The paper that was presented to the Subcommittee for Briefing a few weeks before Christmas was the steer to underwrite the gain share from pending approval from MCA. So, actually, the commissioning decision's been made, as David says, and this paper is about the monitoring and acknowledging that actually we are going to, they are proceeding, there was a recommendation to underwrite the additional funding that's required pending approvals and scheme approvals, et cetera.
Okay.
From the corporate.
Marielle, you indicated.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Just quickly felt the need to comment on that as well, because with regards to the Future High Street Fund Programme, you know, I think perhaps the private apartments in Orchard Square should be scoped out of the project, and obviously my colleague and I voted against that when it came to us in November, so hopefully this committee will have a steer on that once the details have been looked at. But my question was with regards to page 28, the half a million projected shortfall. I raised this in November, so I know it's in relation to electric works and the lettings policy that needs to be relaxed. It's obviously disappointing that this is part of the commercial estate, but it's not bringing in any rental income, it's actually a shortfall, so just wondered, have we got anywhere with this?
I'm not aware of any updates on that from the last committee meeting, Marielle, I'm afraid, but we can, I can progress that and get an answer for you.
Thank you.
I think there's just a couple of things there, the issue around Orchard Square that you mentioned, that Councilor Otten mentioned, is not part of that, it's funding that's come through there, which is passported across to them as part of that Future High Streets Fund, and that's grant funding that goes through to them. So, I'm not sure that that would be de-scoped, taken out of it, as we agreed in this committee in November and approved it, so it would be a bit harsh to be turning around to developers then and saying, oh no, you can no longer take that. And it wouldn't give great confidence in the city if you were suggesting that we're doing that. The other thing around the electric works, that's one of the proposals that we're forwarding in this year's budget, to remove that restriction where there are tech businesses around there, and I think that's one of the things that we're probably agreeing through Strategy and Resources, which will see that now, giving them the okay to do that early on should help to reduce that, but if two tenants have moved out with that restriction not removed, it's difficult to let people in when it's restricted on the tech businesses, I think.
I'm just trying to remember just probably on the same page, I'm sure we said yesterday's, the kind of de-classification of electric works to more general office space rather than restrictions we had on it before, so, you know, it's not, it's just, it's not happened quick enough, but then again, it is the one phase.
This is November, and we've agreed it in November in Strategy and Resources, so it's probably that bit of a lag in coming through.
Possibly.
That's exactly what I was just going to say, Brian, there's going to be a lag, isn't there, in terms of we've relaxed that policy, but it doesn't mean that actually we've got somebody in letting that building at the moment.
Any other questions or comments on the report? Okay, if we can, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I've got a number of questions, actually. Get to the right page. Yeah, so page date three, please, item five or point five, an increase in send taxi costs have increased by £500,000. Could you give an idea of exactly what has increased?
I think it's volume of placement, people using transport to school.
So, sorry, just to clarify, is it an increase in the number of children that are using, or is it an increase in taxi providers' quotes?
Increase in the number of children providing services.
If we move on to the next page, page date four, plans to reuse business support staffing have been delayed. The second paragraph, difficulty in improving fieldwork staff has resulted in one and a half million pound under spent. What particular staff are we talking about in regards to fieldwork? Because that's a very vague idea of what kind of staff it is, so I was just curious to know whether it's any particular types of staff at all.
I don't know the detail of that, but I can get you the answer.
Thank you. Is it? No, I have a few more, actually. If we move on to page forty six, forty seven, sorry. If we move on to page forty-six, forty-seven, sorry. So if we look at the first section, Transport, Regen and Climate, we've got Broadfield Road Junction, there's a forecast slippage of £200,000. Do we know exactly what that is for? I haven't been made aware of that, especially considering it's in my ward. Page forty-seven, the first row.
What page are you talking about?
Page forty-seven. That's correct.
Again, I'm sorry, I don't have the detail on the capital programme monitoring, but Damien's not here today, he probably would have been able to answer that one, we can get an answer for you.
I think I'll leave the other questions and put them in writing to Damien, that would be, thank you.
Mary?
I was just, it's about the fieldwork question. I mean, these are people who work directly with young people and children and social workers, support workers, that kind of role. As I understand it, from my experience, stint on the education committee.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so, excuse me, the report contains recommendations for approval that we all agreed. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. No, so that's clearly carried, thank you. So we'll go on to item eight on the agenda, which is the council tax support scheme. John and Adam, you're to introduce yourselves for the benefit of the viewing public.
Hello, I'm Adam, licensed assistant policy and support manager in the policy and support team. I'm talking on behalf of John Squire, who's lost his voice unfortunately, who's the policy and support manager. So we're here to give a recommendation that our council tax reduction scheme continues in 23, 24, with no changes to the scheme made other than those required by statute. So just to give a little bit of background to the council tax reduction scheme, it was introduced in 2013 when the government abolished council tax benefit. And as part of that change, the government reduced funding for council tax and required councils to introduce their council tax reduction scheme, they reduced the funding by 10%, which we agreed, decided to pass on that cut in funding to the working age cohort by restricting support for council tax support, working age council tax support recipients, 77% of their council tax liability. The council tax reduction scheme requires that pensioners are protected and we make changes as required by statutes of council tax to pension age scheme. The working age scheme has remained the same since 2013. And the report recommends that that continues in 23, 24. We have a hardship scheme to mitigate the harsher impacts of that cut in support to our working age cohort, which again, the report recommends that that continues in 2024, 24. Is there anything else we want to, in terms of the recommendation?
Okay, thank you, well put, John. I think, Joe?
Thanks, yes, thanks for bringing this. I'm slightly baffled by the, well, a number of things. Slightly, I suppose firstly, the equality impact assessment talks about various impacts, but you're not proposing to make a change. So therefore, I mean, and the narrative under that says, well, this is the impact of us having a scheme. And so, is that right, you're saying this is the impact of us having a scheme? We've kind of got to have one. So I'm not quite sure what, you know, what we're supposed to be doing with these impacts if we're not proposing any change and what these impacts are actually referred to.
In terms of the requirements of a scheme, the requirement is that you must have a pension age scheme. The council's decided that we continue with the working age scheme. There's no actual legislative requirement that a working age scheme continues and the council's pretty much funding that because the cutting funding that was applied in 2013 was 10% cut in the funding as council tax benefit was in 2012, 13. Since then, the amount of funding we've received for council tax, the council tax reduction scheme's been wrapped up in all the overall funding. And if you applied the overall cuts in government funding proportionally to the funding we received in 2013 for the council tax reduction scheme, the council's pretty much funding the working age scheme from its own reserves or from the, not reserves, I'm using the wrong term, I'm not a councillor, I'm afraid, from the, in the council tax base setting, so, in the general resources, yes. So by recommending that we're keeping the council tax reduction scheme for working age customers at that same scheme as part of the impact assessment, we're just talking about the positive impacts of maintaining that scheme for that working age cohort.
Okay, thank you, okay, that, I think that's clear. I suppose, I mean, the paper talks about some options that we could do. Presumably other authorities are doing some of these things, the diminimus provision and the income binding and so on. But also says that each of those is actually quite a lot of work for the, as I think, to paraphrase, for the benefit that it brings. It does strike me that there is a piece of work to do at some point on reviewing this. And we're proposing we don't do it today and, you know, I'm happy to accept that we don't do it today. But I think you're kind of flagging for us, aren't you, that we should do this at some point? And there are reasons coming down the road that make it more important that we look at this. So, you know, I welcome this coming back to us in a year or two or whenever it is that we think is appropriate and that we actually do review the scheme. And I think my comment on that would be that I do, you know, I, the numbers we get here are all very abstract and I appreciate there are numbers in there about, you know, this is what it would cost your average person on full benefits effectively on a band aid property, this is what it would cost them if we did this or did that, or this is what they would gain if we went the other way. I would need more than that in terms of actually impacts on, you know, the impact on the individual is, isn't borne out by that figure in a, you know, in a sufficient way, I don't think. I think we need to understand, you know, what hardship is in danger of being caused or what hardship could be alleviated by movement on the central figure? And also what, you know, what hardship or what other policy objectives might be achieved by bringing in banding or diminimus or these other options in terms of the impact on individuals who need this benefit, effectively, let's put it that way. I hope we'll see that when we get this reviewed.
Yeah, no undoubtedly, like, as the report alludes to, the continued delay to the rollout of universal credits meant that the speed at which we need to make changes to accommodate universal credit, we've not needed to meet that yet. And if we're to make a change to the scheme currently, we'd end up with one scheme for universal credit customers, one scheme for non-universal credit customers, which overly complicates the administration of the scheme and confuses these customers. But we do acknowledge that we need to make sure that the scheme is fit for purpose when universal credit is rolled out and meets the needs of the citizens of Sheffield when that is complete. And we will take on board your comments when we do review the scheme, which we need to keep, we need to review on an annual basis and we can bring something back to get a steer on when you would like us to sort of look at that.
Nobody else has indicated on that there, so there are four recommendations on there. Have we agreed on those? Anybody, any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand? No, so that's agreed unanimously, thank you very much. Strange noises. So we'll go on to item nine, the appropriation of former Knoll Hill Residential Care Home for housing purposes. It's page seventy-seven on the agenda, I think Dermot.
If you'd just like to introduce yourself for the benefit of the webcast and then present yourself.
Good afternoon, Dermot Reader, project manager in the Housing Growth Delivery Service, City Futures. This report is seeking approval for the appropriation of the former Knoll Hill Residential Care Home at Halfway, Mosborough, for the purposes of the Part Two of the Housing Act. The appropriation will bring the site into the operational services portfolio, which will subsequently allow for redevelopment of that site using HRA funding. And therefore, the appropriation is needed in the first instance to allow that to happen. The site was vacated in late 2017. The previous Sheffield facility was moved to another location and the existing building has been vacant and just managed under the council's vacant property management services since that time. The, as part of the ongoing work looking at delivery of new temporary accommodation facilities for the council to address the increase in demand that has been seen over the last years that was even escalating just prior to Covid. Our service has been supporting citywide housing solutions to identify a number of development opportunities that could deliver new purpose-built, council-owned and delivered temporary accommodation facilities. And after some identification and review of a number of sites across Sheffield, both council-owned and potentially privately owned, this was one of a number of sites that came forward. We carried out some subsequent feasibility work. That determined that the existing building wasn't considered suitable for refurbishment due to sort of continued dilapidation as a result of antisocial behaviour and violence and vandalism that had occurred in the building, allowing quite a significant amount of water ingress. The age of the building and the construction of the building didn't allow for the type of accommodation the temporary accommodation requires. And also the capacity, the use of the existing building wouldn't have maximised the capacity for delivery on there. Hence, the recommendation in terms of development of the site was put forward as demolition and clearance of the site to clear way for a new development. And so this is the first of three stages. So appropriation into operational services in the first instance, followed quickly by demolition, clearance of the site. And then sort of later this year, bringing forward a capital business case for redevelopment of the site to deliver temporary accommodation.
Thank you, anybody, any questions? Yeah, go on, Shiva.
It talks about engagement with the local members and the local MP, but I spoke to one of the councillors, councillor Gill Smith, and she told me that her preference with the site was to actually, if possible, have a relocate a school that's right on the main road there. But the way this report reads, it doesn't really reflect that at all. So was a school looked at at this site at all?
Thank you, so, yeah, as part of that consultation with local councillors, that point was raised and I approached colleagues in education and they identified that at this current moment in time, the time when the question was raised, that the priorities for school redevelopment were certainly on areas where there were shortfalls and buildings that needed urgent repairs and so on. So at this moment in time, within the education sort of part of the council, there is no project looking at the relocation of the infant school to bring it alongside the junior school. So I responded to councillor Jill, with that information at the time. I appreciate it might not respond, it might not meet her preferred desired outcome for the site. But I, you know, in terms of our role and moving forward with temporary accommodation, we're trying to just deliver the schemes that we've been asked to progress. And I have no other information to say that schools are being looked at for that site.
Okay, I mean, I am disappointed because that area is seeing large amounts of housing developed, particularly around Oakes Close. And given the proximity of the school site to the halfway tram terminus, I would have thought that would have been quite a good place to, you know, market and sell that old school site and actually build a better school and a bigger school for a growing population. But if education have said that's not their priority and it's doing stuff elsewhere in the city, it looks like I don't have that proposal before me today, do I really? But I am disappointed that there's this opportunity here to move a school away from a polluted area and we seem to be passing that. Because once this is done, I'm not, got nothing against a scheme to increase the stock, particularly for the type of housing that we're proposing here, I don't have an issue there. But I just think possibly there's an opportunity to be mistaken, Chair.
There's nobody else indicated, I just, oh, sorry, Marion?
Thank you, thank you for this. I, yeah, I'm for the appropriation of the site for housing. My only concern really is why it took so long with this site, because it's been empty for five years. Can we assume that in future this type of site will fall under the forthcoming accommodation review? So we're not sort of wasting opportunities?
I equally share frustration at how long it's taken to move forward with it. I mean, there are a number of contributing reasons as to why probably for this particular site it's taken so long. In terms of the housing growth delivery and our sort of our identification of the site, that only really took place towards the end of 2020. And then during that following year, obviously we were dealing with various delays that obviously kicked in through Covid. And it's, you know, it's more than reasonable to say temporary accommodation is a sensitive subject. If it was general needs housing development, I suspect, you know, that would have been a more straightforward conversation. So that took time to talk through, discuss with local councillors and agree sort of the best way forward for the site. And then subsequent to that, really, the rest of the time is taken working through feasibility study. We loved it refurbishment to start off with, that took a few months to do. Then the recommendation came back that we should really explore demolition and new build. All of that just sort of stacks, stacks up to the time. But where we are right now, as I said, you should see genuine progress this year, both with demolition, assuming appropriation is approved, and very possibly start on site this year with a new build scheme.
And what about in future, will they come under the accommodation review, sites like this?
I believe so, yeah, so I believe that there's a wider approach to coordinating, looking at council-owned assets and best use across the different departments within the council. There are a lot of competing demands, education, there's not at least one of them, and general needs housing. So, yeah, I think this conversation is probably happening above me, but I'd like to think they are being incorporated.
Joe?
Thanks, I mean, councillor Alex's question's possibly probably one of mine. I do recall that we had an asset strategy paper that was, I think it was possibly a cooperative executive paper, that said we won't be hanging on to sites we haven't got a use for. Now, I appreciate we've finally found a use for this one after five years. But I have to ask, how many other sites are there like this that we're holding on for year after year after year in the hope that we eventually find a use for it? And, you know, if it had been disposed of five years ago, we could have houses on it by now and people would be living there. And okay, maybe it's not exactly the accommodation we want, but we might still have had the opportunity to build that somewhere else and we'd have the capital receipts and, you know, and the council tax receipts and so on coming in all that time rather than paying to keep a building empty, which is what effectively we've been doing. You know, is a five-year delay, is that, is that normal? Is that acceptable? Is it consistent with the asset strategy we've agreed, the cooperative executive agreed a while ago? Or are we looking at sort of improving that turnaround of vacant buildings?
I'd certainly like to say, no, it's not the usual timeframe for moving forward from a site becoming known to become vacant to bringing forward a development proposal. I do think there are, for this particular site and the time over which this has happened, there have been a number of mitigating circumstances, as I said, Covid not least one of them. And that just did bring a number of delays just to moving forward with development of a project. The sensitivities with it, as I said, and almost not least the changes to the committee system and the changes that we've had to incorporate. So I think a lot of things have happened during the course of this particular project that have exacerbated those delays. I would say the work that's happening now between our team, colleagues in property services and everything else would see those timescales significantly reduced.
Thank you, that, I think, I wonder, Chair, I might ask for a briefing note to come round on the kind of the amount of vacant buildings being held and operated and the progress on the asset strategy, if indeed my recollection of the existence of one is correct.
I think we did have a briefing for all members. I think we did have a briefing for all members that was online and in person, because there were people in the committee, in the conference room, as well as people online, where we had officers presenting and talked about. Ashman was there, and amongst others, and they were presenting information around the... Tammy was there, I think, as well. And that took place just before Christmas. And it spoke a lot about what we're looking at with the council's assets and managing those sort of things.
Sorry, I wasn't referring to the accommodation strategy in particular, I was referring to the asset strategy. I suppose it's more about the land than the buildings, possibly. The strategy I'm thinking of that was agreed at...
That's a Sheffield Land and Property Plan.
So, yeah, are we holding on to, again, parcels of land, as much as empty buildings that are, that might be disposed of or might be held?
I think the Sheffield Land and Property Plan was agreed last year.
Right.
Which sets out the strategy going forward.
Yeah.
But I'm sure we can have a look and see if we can find that.
Is it fair to ask for a briefing note on progress into that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I, if I could just ask a question? I note in 1.22, it says Sheffield surrendered the lease back to the council in 2020. Were they holding on to it then, or is it, has that been part of delays? Or was it, were they considering whether they were going to use it again? Or it just seems strange, if they declared it surplus in 2017, and they sat on the lease.
I don't really have the detail behind why it took that amount of time to surrender the lease. And again, really from the site being identified to us as a service and then starting to explore it, that only really took place subsequent to that, mid, late 2020. So I don't have any further valid, valuable information to offer you there, sorry.
And then just the other thing, I mean, it's been answered, you've sort of answered it, you're saying that demolition will be fairly quickly, we'll get on with that if we want to prepare the site, and you say on movement on the site this year, is that the demolition, or is that the, actually, the enabling works, I suppose, and getting through? Because if it's got to go through planning, or are we into that stage, ready to submit the plans and things as well?
Yeah, so we have looked at the sort of quickest route to bring forward the demolition, to try and address some of the local issues with the vandalism and the antisocial behaviour. So the council has an existing urgent demolition contract, so that's allowed us to bring that forward in terms of timeframes. So the expectation is that, not wanting to preempt a decision, but we have a business case to, which will be coming through the capital approvals, which should see a contract award by the end of January and a potential start on site in February. That period of demolition should take about three months, and during which time, the proposals for the actual redevelopment of the site should come through. Whether or not we physically see a start on site in the current calendar year, but I'd hope to see maybe in the financial year in terms of new development.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? No, again, we've got a recommendation in there, the report, we're all in agreement with the recommendation. If anybody's wishes to dissent, if they'd like to raise their hand? No, I think that's approved then unanimously. Thank you very much. That's the last item on the agenda. So thank you, does it, do we note the meeting, the next meeting?
21st of February.
Is the 21st of February. Thank you very much, everybody, for your attendance today. A new personal best, 55 minutes.